All the meeting to order, the Custer County Board of County Commissioners on Wednesday, October the 4th, 2017. Dallas, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May the clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Kathein.
Present.
Commissioner Hood.
Present.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Kline Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
All right. Do we have any amendments to the agenda as we adjusted it yesterday?
I do not.
Okay, and for those that weren't here, we moved the RITAC Board and the county health insurance to the day from yesterday. Instruction to the audience, Dallas, we'll start with you.
And Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
Jackie Bugus, Sentinel.
Tom York.
Nancy York.
John Johnston.
All right. Thank you all for being here. Do we have any minutes to approve this morning? We have no minutes, we've got everything we took up through yesterday. How about the question items?
I have a few things.
I have one after.
Okay, just want to let you know, if you look at your emails today, I did email Marty Galvin and copied everybody else, including Wells, regarding my concern that we haven't heard from him, and October 13th is just around the corner. We did have our, Chuck and I had our conference call with the video streaming people yesterday, and we're actually going to begin our training, and Brenda's going to be included the week of October the 16th, and we are actually going to go live for October 31st.
Cool.
Will we have to wear masks?
It's Halloween, you may wear whatever you want. That's why I chose that date.
So we don't have any nuns.
We'll have a master.
So I may none show up.
Right, right. I just want to talk about two meetings that I would like to go to, and I'm not sure if the other of you received this information, but on October the 25th, I received information on a government, Colorado Digital Government Summit that I would like to attend up in Denver. And also, the CCI Winter Conference is November 27, 28, and 29, so I actually asked Brenda to contact Donna and see where we are with our budget, and if we don't have it, I'm still going to go, okay?
Well, we have no choice, I don't think.
Yeah.
At least part of us be there.
Yeah, me too.
Anything else?
No, that's it from yesterday.
I have one item just to follow up from yesterday, but also to respond to what you said. I'm not going to go to the digital conference, I did say it because you're a digital person, but also, I would like to go to CTI if it works, if not.
CCI.
That's what I meant, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
I'll just pay for it out of my pocket.
That's what I was going to do.
If we don't have the, if we don't have the budget, but I'm going to register for that also. I just want to follow up on coal yesterday, that was that small piece of property that backed up, that he was concerned about. Jackie Hobbie did a tremendous amount of work for us on that, and I really appreciate her efforts. It backs up onto National Forest, so it's a dead end road. She met with JD, and the plan would be for him to come back. He would need to, if we approve this, and I told him that before he spent any money, he needs to come back before us, and either we approve it or we don't. If we do approve it, the process would then be for him to get a survey, so that we bifurcate that property between the two owners. They would have to get a new survey, and it would be surveyed up there, and that would be the process. So I sent that to him and said, before we do any, go any further, is that something you are willing to do? The county would not pay for the survey or anything else, it would be up to you and your neighbor. He wrote back this morning and said, yes, they would like to move forward, and they were willing to follow the rules that we have, you know, that were established by zoning and planning. So I asked him to just get ahold of Brenda and get it on a future agenda, just to let you know that we stood.
Did Donna, or, not Donna, Jackie talk about signage, because there isn't any signage, and is that a better way to go, rather than go through this expense?
Yeah, we mentioned Joe's signage, he said he would like to just go ahead and divide the property, and they'd put up a sign saying private property on their own, so.
But it's still the county's decision.
It's the county's property, we own it.
And that's what he's coming to ask us, if we will be willing to deed that piece to the two owners, that's what he's coming to do.
And I guess I'm still looking at signage versus deeding property to the county.
Perfectly within our rights, I just wanted to let you know where it was at this moment, and when he comes, we can discuss it any way you feel appropriate.
Now, you said that backs up National Forest.
BLM. BLM, I'm sorry.
I would say there's no National Forest down there.
I understand.
Yeah, I've got a problem, what we're talking about, folks, is that we have a, oh, I suppose it's been four or five months ago, the McCarthy family owned all the roads out, Lake Dewey, Sierra City, where they own, and they donated them, deeded them to the county to clear up their, some of the estate issues they're working on, which was fine. Now we have two parties that are at the end of a road, and people will park equipment there, and plow snow in there and so forth, which limits their ability to access their property. The simple thing would have been, if it, before it was divided, if they would have deeded it to them, it would have been fine. Now they want us to take county property and deed it over to them. And as a policy issue, I think we need to be careful what we're doing in giving private individuals to county property, because it sets a precedent, they could have applications lots of places.
How big of a piece is it?
It's not real big, Dallas, but it's, one of these things, it's a principle, it's the legal part of it.
It's a portion, small portion of an acre, I'd say.
But it's one of those things that, you know, it could be part of courthouse law, giveaway. That's my problem, it's not with the process, but the fact that the ownership is entirely different.
Yeah, I see your point.
Than what has been in the past. We could, we could close that road, but they want, they want the property, and by them having the property, it's, that's what throws it into a kink.
But it was, it was owned by McCarthy, and then McCarthy deeded it to the county.
This was, remember here, here four months ago?
Yeah, I remember what that happened, but that was part of that, that was deeded to the county.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
So the county's only had it just a few months.
Right.
Gotcha.
And it's something that's, you know, I think a very good example of, we do one thing we think is good, and then it has unforeseen consequences that we hadn't anticipated. Okay, anything else? Tomorrow, no, Friday, and Donna, I think, is also going, we have an Action 22 Summit Meeting, which is our lobbying group in Pueblo. We have an all-day meeting and then dinner that evening. Some of the guests we're going to have will include a former governor, US Congressman, a number of state representatives, and this is kind of a chance for us to sit down and socialize, as well as listen to reports, and discuss upcoming legislation, and do some quote, unquote lobbying with them. In the past, I've been to these, and it's been a very successful day, so. I think you're not going?
I have a funeral to go to at 1:00, so I will go to the funeral and come to the Action 22 after that. So I will, I won't be there the whole day.
And Donna's going?
Uh huh.
And I think we start at, what, 8:30 or something?
Yeah, it's early.
Fairly early, yeah. That's all that I have, I did look at some roads last night, and none of you, I guess, go on Schofield Lane, but they spent the last couple days out there patching and trying to smooth out Schofield Lane with hot mix, and they have done a tremendous job. It's a whole lot smoother than it was before, you can just see how long it holds up. And also, we do have that cut across road was filled in, I drove it yesterday, works out pretty good, and that was cut by a private contractor, but what we've done in the past, they pay for it, and in this case, we may take it out in trucking costs or whatever there's, they have some, I did some, some things they can do to trade back and forth, so. And it's surprising, and they started about 8:00 out there with a couple of men, and they had two more, and by the time they got done, it was noon. So we think about fixing these things, it does take a go deal longer sometimes than we anticipate, but it's fixed, and the guys are working some more today, and the fellows in Wetmore are patching this one. Okay, let's go on to the attorney items.
Two things, I wrote a letter to San Isabelle Electric, this has to do with the service they provide down in Wetmore, notifying them that the new point of contact will be Donna, and as part of that letter, I put in a request for them to, on an emergency basis, deal with those wires that are still hanging in the trees, and letting them know it's a very, it could be a very dangerous situation, so hopefully, there'll be some action on it, although my threatening letters in the past were ignored regularly, but.
Thank you for your effort.
I did put that in there. And the other thing, this board had already decided to go with the coverage, the county health pool provided by CTSI, so I did prepare a resolution, because that's how CTSI wants it, and if you want, I can read the resolution at this time, if you want to deal with it under old business, we can do it then. How would you prefer to proceed?
All right, I did, let's just do it now.
Okay, all right, so this resolution, it's Resolution Number 17-19, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County to apply for membership in the county health pool, CHP, offered by Colorado Technical Services, Inc., CTSI. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, has studied various options for providing health insurance benefits to county-elected officials and employees, and eligible family members, and whereas the board has determined that the plan offered by CTSI, known as the county health pool, CHP, is the best choice, based on the range of coverage it provides and the cost of said coverage compared to other plans, and whereas the board has voted unanimously to apply for membership in the county health pool, with the coverage to be effective beginning January 1, 2018, now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, that an application for membership in the county health pool shall be submitted to CTSI with a request that the coverage provided by CHP shall begin on January 1, 2018. The county finance officer and the administrative assistant to the board are directed to submit the necessary application forthwith, done this 4th day of October 2017. Signatures for the commissioners and for the clerk to attest.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution as read by court.
Second, and we have some more discussion. As we've looked at this health experience, it's very, very expensive, and this will allow us to provide coverage at a less expensive rate for our people, and this is a plan that a lot of the counties around the state are using. No discussion, I will call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both, same sign, motion passed unanimously.
And I don't have any other attorney items.
Okay, admin.
Um, you want me to come up then?
Whichever, if you got something.
I just got a couple of things.
The first thing is, I sent you the information about the treasurer's account that you guys were discussing, so Donna said we could discuss that under old business later. Was brought to our attention yesterday that the scale needs to be recertified, and I got the contact information from Donna, the guy that normally does it, and I called him and left him a message, so hopefully, he will call back and let us know when he can come and do that.
It's usually a very simple process, why don't we just put some weight on it?
Yeah.
And see if the dial matches the weight that they put on it.
Yeah, so, hopefully, he can come and do that soon, so. And the other thing is that I, Beth Archeletta, sent a new letter about her RITAC, what do you call it, recommendations, and then I attached the email from Cindy as well with her recommendations, so, and that's it.
Okay.
Anything for me?
All I think is, and again, we don't have a great way, but we're trying to figure out the legal process by which we ended up with this economic development monies. We're trying to go back through the minutes.
No, 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 that's, this was, she did, and I had said to her.
Yeah, I found it.
Should be under old business, she did.
No, she won't have had anything else, and I said, we don't have this on old business that I see.
No, she just got it, what she just said is sitting here, she could talk about it now, but it should really be old business.
Right.
From yesterday.
Yeah, but is economic development something different, or is this what we're talking about, the treasurer's?
The treasurer's account.
Yeah, right.
Is called economic development.
Okay.
That's $1,760.
Right, that's what that is, so.
It was community.
Community rehab?
Rehab.
Or something like that?
Yeah.
I don't know.
It wasn't economic.
But yeah.
But I would like, when we have these, when we do have the amendment, amendments to the agenda, that we, at that point in time, if you know, we've got them, then we get it.
Yeah, technically, I guess if it's old business, you can.
Well, I like normal.
Right, 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 yep, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, that's it.
All right, airport. We can either take a break for 10 minutes, or you can start early.
All the airport people here?
Half of us are here.
Can I make the other?
I don't think so.
Could you get your, to the bar? I'm going to stand up and shake your hand.
Thank you.
That makes it official, I ain't got to start.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
Well, it's good to be back.
How you feeling?
Much better than I did five weeks ago.
Good, good. Been concerned about your health.
Yeah, well, I don't know if you know, I did have a heart attack, and it was semi-miner, they put a stand in, and sent me on my way, I think I'm going to be on medication for a couple of years, I guess.
How you feeling?
Feeling better. And I'm walking like they said, they told me I should, I'm up to a half mile a day, so.
We're glad to hear it.
We'll get there.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Okay, you should have a copy of the report in your packet, I've made no changes to it. Monthly meeting was held September 21st, all members present, yay. Audience introduction, we had Lynn Legree, Bill Geipel, and Tom Flower in attendance, and we approved the minutes from August 17. Under the fuel report in August, because of doctor's appointments and here and there and back and forth, I'm kind of a month behind, but we sold 603 gallons in August, and there was 968 gallons in the tank August 31st, and then on September 21st, we had 659 gallons, kind of order fuel, Bob, Charlie's working on that.
Yes, we're trying to find somebody.
Find somebody to split a load.
What's the cost look like?
364 this morning.
364, that was, the last I saw was 363, so it's not climbing up real horribly fast. And there's about 600 gallons in the tank now?
Yes.
So we hadn't sold a whole lot, because the weather's been horrible down there, too.
My concern, though, is that maybe I'm wrong, guys, there's only 600 gallons in that tank, and as humid as we are.
Yes.
We can, we can get some condensation, I can't wait.
It's possible, although past experience hasn't shown much of that, my personal concern is when we get down around 250 gallons, then things start happening in that tank, so, anyway, we'll find somebody to split a load with soon, I hope. How about the fuel dispenser?
It's working good.
It is?
Yep.
Oh, okay, then, scratch.
When did it start working good, because I just spoke with Donna yesterday?
Let's see, Monday, they came out and rewired it from the first time they were there, and credit card reader and the whole nine yards, we checked it and ran a gallon through it, boom, shut off right on the gallon, so everything's fine.
Good, okay, so, scratch that, native fuel dispenser's not quite working properly.
And they're coming out again today to double-check everything.
Okay, yeah, we have yet to see charges from Eaton, I sent an email to Brian Pally two weeks ago, and he said he was forwarding all that paperwork to his district manager for, for charges. Now, that bothers me, because here it is, October, we're almost to the end of our budget process, and what, what I see is, if they fiddle around and send us a bill like sometime about the middle of December, the budget will have already been approved, and if we, you know, if we, if we get a bill about mid-December, we could easily pay it from 2017 budget, because it's already there. If they don't get it to us until January, then, that would put things in a crimp unless that capital money was carried over into the 2018 budget, and so, that's a finance quandary that John and Donna probably ought to look at.
Normally, and it's, I'm sure we've had this happen in the past, if you get stuff that comes in from last year's, last month's work in a billing cycle, even though it's the first of the year, the accountant's orbit around where it comes out the last of the year's monies.
Yeah, well.
Because that was a cost incur in this calendar year.
Right, yeah, well, I just wanted to alert you to that, so.
This is a process every company faces, just.
I could, I could almost see some kind of a weird crimp in the budget somehow.
On a cruel basis, it'd be covered.
Okay, well, I just wanted to bring that up.
At one point that I hope we follow through on, though, when we get their bill, I think we need to look at it pretty hard.
Yes.
Because they have cost us money, and cost us inconvenience, and cost us time by not having a unit that's working, and they certainly didn't produce what they said they were going to when we started off the day one.
Well, as soon as I see any kind of a charge from them, I will forward it to you as a board.
Okay, next.
Okay, the flying went well, I'm told, I was not able to attend because of the blood thinners I'm taking, I started out the morning with a nosebleed that didn't stop until almost 11 o'clock, so, I didn't, but I'm told that it went well, and we have yet to tabulate all the costs and income.
How many numbers did we have, any ideas?
How many people? Oh, I think they sold something like 60 pancake breakfasts, and then there was other people that showed up and didn't eat, so.
That, that was bigger than we had.
Yeah, considering that the guy was supposed to our advertising force kind of dropped the ball.
Yeah.
Congratulations, gentlemen, I know you worked hard to make it happen.
Yep.
Yeah, we did.
We didn't lose any money, but we didn't make much either.
Yeah, okay, yeah, and we turned in the budget packet on September 11th, so we're all set and ready for the next Thursday.
You got a question?
Yeah, say something about the budget, I just wanted to personally thank JD Prince for looking it over, when we got done with it, everybody on the board is more than capable of making a budget, but it's always a good idea to have a second eye, so, thanks. You're welcome. Thanks, Ray.
Was there any changes made?
No.
No, okay.
Not, not when you and I sat down and did it that first time, it's the same.
You folks need to be aware, though, that the budget requests we have far exceed our projected income for next year.
Oh, it always is.
And that'll be going over on the 22nd?
Yeah, well, we had our information today from, from our finance officer.
Okay.
And then we'll start to, well, actually, we go over, no, no, the 22nd, on the 12th.
On the 12th.
Okay, I just read, that's fine.
Yeah, next Thursday, so, okay, there's a couple members of the advisory board that are a bit concerned about the DNO insurance that elapsed the first part of the year. My personal feeling on that is, since we are not a authority board, we are not directors or officers, that that insurance is not necessary for us. No other advisory board in the county that I know of has that, that policy, so.
I think that's correct, because we're the ones that, that's under our liability, so there's no reason to.
So, but anyway, as a board, we decided to advise you, if the BOCC thinks that it needs to be done, or that we need that policy, then we advise you to go ahead and get it, but that's, that's, that choice, now, we're not insurance people, so we don't know. Okay, and then, last thing, World Fuel inspected the fuel system and our paperwork and all of that, they gave us a new computer program to help, to check incoming fuel for accuracy as far as specific gravity, and based on temperatures and that sort of thing. Bob, do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's, but it works great, and it takes out all the human error.
Yeah, so, that's, that's a super thing, and it didn't, didn't cost us anything, did it?
And what did their inspection entail?
They're.
Said they inspected the fuel system.
No, they're, what they do is they come out to check the paperwork, so they make sure that what we have on hand is.
That our records are accurate.
Yeah, right.
I was going to say, how can they inspect the fuel system and say it's okay if we still were fighting it home? What else?
Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Not a question, information for you.
Okay.
We just hired a new building and grounds person, so I'm going to be taking him at some point tomorrow to look at the airport, because that will be his responsibility, so I'm going to ask you politely to please write those codes for me that I need at the gate, and also the door.
Where, where do you want it?
And you can put it at the bottom.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
You guys want to be there when she shows up?
Well, somebody should be there, there's a couple doors that we keep locked that need to be cleaned regularly as well, one's out into the maintenance area where we park vehicles, or the snow plow and the tractor, and the other door that we keep locked is to the office.
So they let you know when they're going to come out?
Yeah, or that, we can.
Yeah, and I'm on hold until I hear from him, it's at some point tomorrow, so.
No, you, you have the key.
I do not have a key, sir.
The key that Dave Post had. But anyway, uh, that 129 is the, uh...
What, what is that number?
The door.
But I don't know what that is. Is that a two?
That's, that's the code for the, for the pilot's lounge. And it's in a vertical line, so...
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-huh.
So, is anybody, can anybody meet me at any time tomorrow?
Anytime.
Okay, could I just get your telephone number to reach you?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Can I help you? I don't know who the address is to, but what's the status of that hanger? Have we got it fixed?
Doctor Smith here.
The last, well, I was out there the 21st and I looked at it and it's still bent. And I, uh, sent, uh, Kevin an email, but I didn't get a reply.
Is he the one who volunteered to fix it?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay.
It's distressing, I thought we had taken care of that. Okay, let's follow up and let's get it done. Doctor Smith's been waiting it off a long time.
Okay, well, uh...
I, I understand your hands are tied.
No, it's just hard to hold volunteers accountable.
Well, give my real period of time if not, come back and talk.
A volunteer is a volunteer, but, you know, free, free labor, uh, if a volunteer does the very best they can, what would you hold them accountable for?
No, it's just the time period that we're talking about. That's what I'm referencing.
Oh, okay.
If we can't get it done in a reasonable time, you talk to me and we'll see what else we can work out of it.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's not a big deal, but it's been hanging so long.
Yeah, well, I, I have put out, uh, plenty of hours of research on that myself.
Oh, yes, no, no, I appreciate all everybody's done, I just...
And I have advised the parties involved many times over the years how to get it done and they never made a move on it, so...
The stick has to be alive and well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yo.
Thank you.
Thank Bob and Bob back there for all the records to, we appreciate it. My next thought, Mr. Custer, was that if we couldn't get these guys to fix a field, we're gonna ask you guys to come out.
We've been out there every time, uh, and one of the reasons why, excuse me, I asked Donna the other day not to pay that bill until I get a chance to look at it, or Bob, uh, we don't want them guys charging us for coming back and forth the four or five times they have, and I don't want her just to pay it and then down the road goes.
And I also have a heart, a little bit of heartburn about...
Yeah.
The full cost because they have certainly delayed us and cost us fuel sales.
Right. Oh, yeah. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. It is now 9:25 and our, 35, excuse me, and our next, uh, report is due at 9:45. Let's take a brief 10-minute break until they get here. If they get here sooner, we'll reconvene. Now you got your break, you wanna just...
I'm gonna wait for...
Well, I'll wait for 10.
Oh, no, yeah, wait for 10. Okay, never mind.
So, while we're waiting, I mean, the recorder may be on, but just off the one question. The vaccine for flu is not a live, help me if I'm right, so, you really don't give someone the flu when you get a flu shot, but it used to be that way? No?
Um, I, I couldn't speak to way back. I don't, I don't know what, how, you know, the, the nasal that we used a few years ago was the live virus?
Yeah.
That, that's what a lot of kids and their parents preferred, but they found out it wasn't working, so they pulled it, so, it's not even available until they...
So, you don't get the flu from getting a...
Study it. You cannot get the flu from getting the flu shot. There are, there are some side of, you know, it's possible to have like some aches, some chills, some of the things that you would get with the flu are potential side effects, but you cannot get the flu from the flu shot. And if people say, "Well, every time I get the flu shot, I get the flu," well, if they get it within the two weeks after, it's because they were exposed and the vaccine couldn't work yet.
Thank you.
No, it's fine, it's fine. It's important to know, it's important to know.
Another question to ask you and you partially answered it. Do you think it takes about two weeks to get the reaction, to get the antibodies built up?
Two weeks to...
And that's if you're not sick.
Exactly, exactly.
Anything that makes you sick, I mean, if something happens to your health, it may take longer, or you may not get that much of a reaction.
Yeah, yeah. We, this year, we actually had high dose because of our new VaxCare system that is, is recommended for seniors over 65. We've never been able to give that before. We didn't know it was gonna be so popular, so we're out of it now, and they're trying to get us more, but it's backordered, so, um, and the, the reason they have a high dose is because seniors tend to not have as good an immune response. When you give them the antigen, they don't make as many antibodies, so they double or triple the antigens in there to get a, a more robust response. Um, but it is only trivalent, meaning it only protects against three strains, and the, the other that we have is quadrivalent, it protects against four strains, and you never know which strain is gonna be the one you're gonna be exposed to.
So, you get both shots?
No, you don't get both shots. Sorry, Bob.
But you're gonna be here next Tuesday because we're gonna be in the middle of budget hearings?
Okay.
How long are you gonna be here?
Is it Tuesday? I, I thought it was Thursday we're over here.
Thursday?
Is what I thought.
Maybe it is. I don't know.
That's, was my, because I'm not working Tuesday.
We'll check with...
Because I'm sure it was Thursday somehow that we were coming, doing our outreach here, going to...
Maybe it is Thursday, the 12th.
I think it's Thursday.
Okay, I would like to call the meeting back to order. It is 9:47. The next item on the agenda will be the public health report.
Okay, I know Alyssa emailed it to you. Um, the reason I'm here and she's not is that she's at Public Health in the Rockies, which is our biggest, uh, conference that we attend each year. Um, it's, it's really great because it's a lot of interesting sessions. She can, she was especially looking at the suicide sessions, the certain sessions, you know, kind of sparked her interest. There were some leadership ones. It just covers about everything and, um, and it's a great conference, and I'm glad she went in. She'll be able to do a lot of, uh, networking and meet some of her peers that she hasn't met yet there. Um, they definitely have like a nurse leader meeting and some of the other meetings at that conference, so, she's there. I didn't go with her this year, we just decided too much was happening and somebody needed to stay in the office, so, maybe next year, we'll see. Um, did you have any questions on what she submitted?
I did.
Uh, there's a little more from the school nurse that you didn't get, so I'm happy to share that. Um, it came in late. Uh, Carmelina said this month they've had 250 students seen, some still, some pink eyed, but the numbers have dropped. She did training with the staff in the elementary so that they understand bloodborne pathogens and infectious materials, so that they know how to properly handle that. Um, we had a lot of MRC volunteers and other volunteers from the community who helped her complete 250 required student health screenings. That's like vision, hearing, weight, height, weight, um, all those. She will continue to do screening and re-screening over the next few weeks to get the kids that missed out or that needed to be redone because they failed some area. And she got replacement AED batteries and pads so that she knows they're functional and good for an emergency, so, that Carmelina's a gem. You're so lucky to have her.
Question?
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, and you may not know, but Alyssa was working on the, um, the, I forgot the name of the program, but no smoking program, tobacco age to 21 or something.
Right. I don't have a status update on that.
That's fine, I thought, just a case.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm not sure where she is with that. I know that, I know that she got a grant and I'm, but I'm not sure where we are in that process.
Thank you.
I can't answer it, sorry. Anything else? I thank you for your help in getting her. She's doing a really good job. She's very calm, she handles everything that comes up, just handles it.
Well, she's, we're lucky to have her, but we're also very lucky to have you guys.
Oh, well, thanks. Thanks, Bob.
Just, just, I don't know of any place that I've worked where we had a transition in leadership that's gone as smooth as you folks have out there.
Yeah, well, you know, Rhonda's awesome. It's, it's been, it's been good, it's all worked out. It really has.
How's your space?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's okay, it's okay. We don't know anything about the future in that clinic, but we, we're there for now and, and it's working. We've, we've really cleaned out. We, we cleaned up and, you know, organized things and it's, it's, it's going well.
This is kind of a side question, but with our school nurse.
Mm-hmm.
Well, let me back up. I'm thinking, maybe I'm wrong, but I'm thinking oftentimes the first place we see diseases pop up are in kids.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't think we've had any confirmed cases of flu in the county yet that we...
No, not that I'm aware of.
We have in the state though.
In the state, there've been 20 hospitalizations already, which is really early for that.
So, if we start to get an, uh, an indication of an outbreak at the school, uh, could that be something that you could bring to our attention?
Absolutely.
Uh, because I, you know, I see that as a, maybe I'm seeing skeletons where there aren't, but I also see that we have a...
Yeah, yeah, we really try to work closely, um, you know. The clinic lets us know when they see the first positives, then we, if it is in the school age, you know, a, a lot will happen.
Yeah, I guess what I'm thinking at that point, uh, if we still have vaccines and stuff available as commissioners and so forth, we need to make a public education push because, look, it's here, it's real, we need to get, you need to get inoculated.
Right, right. And what's interesting is I, I have a lot of parents who are pro-vaccine, they vaccinate their kids for everything else, but they don't do the flu, and they have some reason that they don't. Um, and so, and it, for me, it, you know, it's 100 years since the great flu pandemic during World War I, and it makes me a little nervous, so, um, but you can't make people take it if they don't want it, and I, you know, we, we just do the best we can. We have had early enthusiastic response from our adults and seniors and, um, so...
Man, it would've been my great-grandfather died in a 1970 flu, making a ranch right out here in the woods.
Exactly, exactly. It was a bad one, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent report. Anything else?
You're all good?
Yep.
Okay.
Great job.
Yeah, you bet. We'll be giving you your flu shots soon.
We are.
Yes.
I've never had one.
You've never had one?
Me neither. I get them.
Well, if, I tell you, if you ever, if you get the flu, you definitely wanna have the flu shots because it's so awful, it's so awful.
And when's our clinic here being?
I think we're coming over here on the 12th, on Thursday. But you know what? If you need to try to come in, um, over there, let me know. Um, and then we're doing our first public, um, clinic on the 13th, on Friday next week.
And that will be over there?
At the school, the school.
My wife needs to get one, especially because she's a cancerous librarian and, you know, those immune systems are compromised.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Just a little change of subject if I may.
Sure.
Um, do you, oh, clinics or how do the teachers know to look for students who have, who have signs of potential abuse?
Oh.
How, does the school have, how do the teachers know that this dude looks like we need to follow up with?
That's a great question. I, I think that, um, I, I wanna say in their, uh, workdays or whatever they have, that they have had some training, that the counselor and the principals are, are up on this and that they, but I can't tell you that for a fact.
I can't.
Oh, good.
Because my daughter's a teacher.
Oh, yeah.
And, and they do, they have trainings and they have their, their...
I think they're attuned to it. That's, that's my guess, and, and they would also talk with Carmelina and work with her too, so...
That's from an education standpoint, it's something that the school board has to be extremely careful with, stay home.
Absolutely.
And probably better prepared than a lot of them are.
Exactly, exactly. Yep, yep. Okay.
Anything else?
Anything else? Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. We'll see you.
Stay healthy.
I'll wash my hands.
Okay, that's right. Okay, good, good, good.
Public health on Thursday?
Public health. The shots, the flu shots.
Next Thursday.
The courthouse shots are next.
Courthouse.
Away from tomorrow.
I was asking about what day they were on the calendar for the budget.
I can't remember if we have to, if we're doing, I think Rhonda has clipboard of appointments, doesn't she?
She does, yes, and I have the forms up here.
Okay.
What day is she on the budget?
On the budget?
Oh.
Um, uh, the 11th?
Wednesday.
1:00 P.M.
Right.
Yep, Wednesday.
That's what we got, you're...
Okay, I'll make sure she doesn't forget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, see if we get Human Services?
Yeah, I just, that's...
You already did.
Yeah.
Just got there in a minute.
Hello, how are you guys?
I got writer's grant from all those checks yesterday.
Well, I know. We ran a second payroll, basically, I don't know. That was kinda crazy. First time we've ever had that many handwritten's at one time, that's for sure, but, okay. Part of that was because we've got some of our, um, CSBG money that we've been waiting for, so, we got money now, so, that was helpful. So, yeah, four of those checks were for the emergency services, so...
Anything exciting for us?
Nope, nothing, well, no, nothing exciting, just our everyday thing and everything is okay on the budget sheets and stuff, um, no big surprises there, everything is, looks good, we're...
Do you have any more outreach, uh, energy money?
That starts, uh, started October 1st. Uh, we went to a training in September and, um, they, they cut our money some. I still don't know how much I'm getting, he still hasn't sent me the final thing, but they cut the payments. We used to be able to go up to a thousand dollars, they cut them to 500 per client, so that is cut down. Then after that, we went up to Denver for a two-day training on LEAP, which starts November 1st, but applications are already coming in, and they did increase the amount to the clients, um, that went from 700 max to a thousand max. So, we see a little bit start fall here, but this has raised a little bit, so we're not sure how it's gonna play out, yeah.
So, with the 500 though, that's all you can give to one family in a year?
Mm-hmm.
So, then you're hoping to pick up any additional needs through the LEAP?
Yeah, we can do, um, we can do LEAP, yeah, and, um, you'll see, and then if we have to, we have some money in our CSBG right now, so we can compensate it that way. So, we should be okay, although CSBG ends in December and I'm not sure what we're gonna get there, so, that's always just a waiting game. Took us forever to get our money this year, so we'll just have to see.
Have you seen an increase in guest clients, whatever term you use, uh, since Dr. turned cold?
Yeah, we always, we see that because it's getting cold, people can't work outside like they were doing, and so, we always see an increase in the, in the fall, well, and in the winter, and so, anybody that was on LEAP last year, they start mailing applications out to them, and they started in September, middle of September mailing those applications out. We have already just probably got 50 applications already in because people are bringing them in, which is good. We can't start entering them till October 1st, which we've started doing, and they won't get a payment until November, but at least we're getting them stretched out, so we're not, so, everybody coming in at one time and applying, and we're trying to get those entered so that they can make the first payroll, which is in November, so, that really helps. But yeah, the people are bringing those LEAP applications in like crazy.
So when you send people who, when they come to you and they say, "I'm in desperate need, I don't have food, shelter," whatever, and they don't qualify for the program, what do you do with those people?
We send them to the churches. We send them to, Methodist Church has some funding, Catholic Church has some funding. And so that's what we, that's what we do with them. Because if they don't meet our criteria, there's not too much we can use. Yeah, yeah. So we send them. Now, especially, the churches always have them come to us first. And then if that doesn't work, then we'll just say, we'll get all the churches, say we can't help them, and then they'll, they usually have the money and they do it. So that way we can keep them, we can take care of them. Outside of that, I don't know if this comes under a handyman thing or, or what, but we have a fax machine in our office, a small one, because we don't want to use the main one because we get a lot of confidential stuff. And so we don't want to use that. We're having problems with it. But our copy machine that we have is also a fax machine. So all, what we need is a coax cable run from this phone drop over here, up through the ceiling, and then connect it to, over here to plug into the fax, into that copying machine. So I don't know who that would fall under.
Normally that would be Chuck or a new person.
Oh, okay, okay.
But if he can't physically do that, I can ask the new person.
Okay, so I should talk to Chuck about it?
You should talk to Chuck.
Okay. Because I just wasn't sure how we-
Where are we? We have a new person coming on board.
Yeah, we haven't made, yeah, we haven't made a major announcement to staff yet.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Perfect. Okay, I'll talk to Chuck about that. Because the fax, the fax machine is just small and it was working okay, but it's starting, it's putting faxes through and it starts beeping. We got to go over there and unjam it and then it puts it through and then it's like, okay, did we get them all? And, yeah.
I, I use the type machine you did. It's all, they call it all-in-one, but just in case, I have a fax machine that I'd be happy to donate to.
Oh, okay, okay.
Just in case that doesn't work.
Okay, perfect.
Or in the interim or something like that, if you need a faxing, I have one.
Okay.
Chuck is out until Monday.
Oh, that's, okay, that's fine. We checked to make sure, we were sure that copying machine could do that and I checked and they said, oh yeah, that went. And we had already checked and were going, we're thinking we just can plug this right in there and we could. And so that would, that would be great. And so I just thought we got to run a, we got to run a cable up through there. And so, okay, perfect. So that's my only question that I have, and if you guys don't have anything.
Just the same question I ask every single month, although you started with it. No anomalies, nothing unusual? You don't need anything from us to help you, help the folks?
No, nope, not right now.
Maintain.
Maintain, not right now. We don't want any of those things, right?
We want to help the people, but we don't want to be out of it.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, thanks guys.
Thank you.
We'll see you later.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything.
And hopefully I don't have to have you sign a hundred more checks, no.
I'm ready.
All right, all right, all right.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right, we are, this is the last of our staff reports, and now we're ready for our whole business, and that would be the retail store.
Um, Bob, um, on our new business, we have the budget, the preliminary budget, we scheduled at ten o'clock, so if you could maybe just move to that first.
We are going to move into the budget.
How are you?
Pretty good.
John?
Good.
I'm running.
Come out.
You know, we, like every year, we got all the information from all the departments and put it all together and projected the revenues and along with the revenues that they requested, that they thought they were going to get. And it didn't come out too very positive this year. We've got projected revenues of seven million three fifty-five and projected revenues of six million three oh four. So we've got about a million and fifty thousand dollars over expenditures over revenue. And if you're looking at that first page, you can see down on the bottom, the bottom line there, the general fund is three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over, Road and Bridge, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and then going across all the, all the other, all the other funds.
Is the, the insurance fund in conjunction with what we just approved, the healthcare?
Well, the insurance fund doesn't have anything to do with the medical.
Okay.
This is all just-
The ground, the liability and the workman's comp.
Yeah, there's a special fund just set up for the liability and workman's comp and that type of stuff.
What constitutes, I see the general fund is three hundred and twenty-five thousand in the negative at the moment. What constitutes the general fund? What, I mean, we have, we have a road bridge, we have the airport, we have all the, what other general fund is that just salaries and insurance and?
Well, the general fund, if you look over at page, let's see where it would be easiest. On page seven. That's where it starts. And the general fund encompasses the commissioners, county attorney, and all that, the general government. And then it also encompasses the district attorney and the sheriff. And on the next page, the health department. See, it just, it covers all those areas.
Everything else.
And each one of the departments, you know, is detailed in, in the back of that, so if you want to take a look at page nine, it'll show, it'll show the commissioners and it'll show the salaries, the benefits, operating supplies, travel, and so on and so forth. And that'll be, that'll be the same with almost every department. They'll, they'll have a few different categories other than those, but each, each department has their breakout of all their expenditures. And you know, we, we have, you have a few days to review this before we, you start talking to the East Department head, so if you had some questions or anything after you looked it over, we'd be happy to sit down with you.
Just, if, if one day the commissioner's salaries, that's based on the current commissioners?
Right. Yeah, just, District One is, is forty-nine thousand seven hundred down at the bottom. Yeah, it's based on current commissioners. So what happened really in the, in the revenue area, you know, we lost about sixty-six thousand dollars because the assessed valuation went down.
Which page are we on there, John?
Well-
Just his new, he said sixty-six thousand?
Yeah. The assessed valuation went down by three million two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. And that equated to sixty-six thousand dollars in property taxes.
And this is probably the first year in a long time that that's dropped that much?
Oh, yeah. Every year prior to that, we've always gained some. So with the state making their, whatever they did, with residential properties, you know, it, it hurt us a little bit. It's going to hurt, it's going to hurt the school and some of the others more than it hurt us, but, so.
Could you just repeat that figure again?
The drop in assessed valuation?
Yeah.
Three million?
Three million.
Two fifty-two, nine ten.
Thank you.
The actual assessed valuation is, for this year, is ninety-nine million, four oh eight, nine twenty. You know, that's all. If you want to take a look at page two, it's, it's all there.
No, wait.
Page two shows the assessed valuation and then the mill levy for each department, the general fund, Road and Bridge, public welfare, insurance, emergency services. And I did include a half a mill this year for the contingent fund, so that money will generate about forty-nine thousand dollars.
That there isn't an increase because before that was just in the general fund?
Right, right. That, that half a mill would have normally been into the general fund. But that money can be used for anything, future use or whatever, so.
The Road and Bridge fund, I'm looking at sixteen and seventeen, was about five hundred thousand. Eighteen, we have four ninety-seven, but I think I've seen some figures that are higher than that.
What page are you on?
Page two. No, wait, this was, this isn't the expenses, this is the income.
Yeah, this is just the property taxes.
So we have about fourteen thousand, sixteen, eighteen thousand dollar drop just in property taxes to Road and Bridge?
Yeah.
For those of you in the audience that have heard this song and dance before, but from about sixty-five, every ten years, our valuation basically doubled. And it just kept going up, doubling and doubling and doubling, until about 2005, and then it started to level off. And about 2010, we basically become almost flat. We rip around a hundred million or ninety-eight million or whatever, and we only increased like a million dollars a year. And now with where we are with our county evaluation, it actually shows that we've broken that trend of up, and this is the first year, I think since sixty-five that I've looked at, that we've had a downtrend in the county valuation, which to me is, you know, we've talked about this for a couple of years, and that's something that we, you know, we knew, we felt was coming. Hopefully now that we're seeing real estate taxes, I mean, real estate sales increase and some other things, I'm, I'm optimistic about the next year. But that's, for those of you that haven't followed, that's kind of the history. Okay, John, excuse me, go ahead.
Well, the only other thing that I might mention is that the last three years, you know, you've gained, you've gained money in the, in the fund balances, to the tune of over a million dollars. So three years ago, you know, your fund balances were a million dollars less than they are now. So this, this million and fifty thousand dollars that has been requested this year, you may have to go into those fund balances to balance some of this stuff, depending on what is, what is approved at the final time. So just thought I'd mention that, you know, that over the last few years, we've, we've done some things.
But each of those years though has been rolled into the next year's general fund, haven't it?
Well, it's total overall county.
But in terms of our assets, if we look at the dollars we have, did you say we have a million dollars more than we had three years ago to spend?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, you-
And where would that appear?
Well, it'll appear in the fund balances, of all the fund balances. You have to take, you'd have to take the general fund, Road and Bridge fund, and all the funds to determine where most of it is.
We just can't add up those four years.
Well, yeah. That's what I did. In 2014, I, I just went to the audit results, audit packages. In 2014, you gained two hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
So didn't we use that money in 2015? We looked at what we had for a budget or we didn't?
2015, you gained two hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
So what would you be comfortable with, looking at maybe a two hundred and fifty thousand or three hundred thousand dollar transfer from, from our reserves for the budget that's coming here?
Well, yeah.
It would be more than that if we needed it.
See, in 2016, you gained four hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That was a big year of gain. And this came right, this comes right off of the audit results. So these are, these are actual numbers.
Could I have the two thousand and fifteen number again?
Two hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
And where would I find it in this document?
You won't.
That's what I'm concerned about.
But I've, I've got that information on a separate sheet here that we can, like, copy up for you.
I would appreciate that, so we know that if we do need to step into reserves that-
See what, because what I did-
People are working with.
You need to have that right away?
No, 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 no. I just, by the time we sit down, because I'm going to work on this this weekend and look at the-
The rest of you want to look at these, and you have a copy of the, of the, of the audit results for each year. It's on page seven of every year.
Last year, didn't we dip into reserves some last year in our, in our budget? And by the end of the year, we had some money left over. But then our national budget, didn't we dip into reserves to cover some stuff?
Well, if we did, the net came out as net gain.
At the end of the year.
At the end of the year.
But at the time we did our budget, so based upon our income projections, I think we did, we did into the reserves to make it balance.
I think we got in about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, a hundred thousand was what I was thinking.
Yeah, but at the end of the year, it came out that rather than a hundred thousand negative, it was four hundred and sixty-seven positive.
Yeah, but that was because they hadn't spent it.
Right.
We went into the negative to balance our budget because we, we have to submit a balanced budget, but we don't know what the X's want to be until the end-
Right.
Until December third.
That's right.
But just to qualify, okay, so you're looking at 2014, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, 2015, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, and 2016, four sixty-seven, that if we needed to, we could work with that.
Yeah, see, that's correct. This is, it's not all in the general fund now, you understand?
No, no.
It's countywide.
Countywide. So-
So that would be reflected in beginning fund balances?
Beginning and ending fund balances, yeah. If you go back to 2012, for example, or 2013, and look at the ending fund balance, and then look at the ending fund balance at the end of 2014, it will be an increase of two hundred and eighty-eight thousand. So, and you know, these are audited numbers, so they're good numbers.
So procedurally, if we, before we went into any of these reserves, if we needed to find another hundred thousand dollars, how would we budget that from the reserve into?
Well, okay, just automatically, say you go through the budget process here-
Right.
And you still can't come up with a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And it's all in, let's say it's all in the Road and Bridge fund. What happens is the revenues are the same. The expenditures are down to a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And the fund balance gets reduced by a hundred thousand dollars.
I see.
So it's, it's actually, what you're doing is you're, you're using a hundred thousand dollars of the fund balance to balance the budget.
I got you, so, I'm sorry, I'm a little slow.
It's kind of complicated.
No, I understand what Zach was saying. If you go to the budget itself, I'm not going to find that extra surplus that's sitting in the Road and Bridge account that's been left over from prior years?
Yeah, you are.
Because every year it shows in the beginning balance of the-
Let's go, let's go to Road and Bridge.
Okay.
Page forty-two.
Forty-two.
You have it memorized.
I've done this before, I think. And, and please, I'm just trying, I'm in the learning process.
Sure.
Okay.
On page forty-two, you see the, the Road and Bridge budget summary for twenty sixteen and seventeen, and projected eighteen. If you go down, you see the fund balance beginning in twenty sixteen was one million, four ninety-three. The ending was one million, eight eighty-one.
Right.
So, uh, but these are unaudited figures now. See, so the difference between those doesn't equal this four-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand over here that, that was done after the audit. But at the end of twenty sixteen, there, there was a one million, eight eighty-one, four thirty-six in fund balance. So that starts the fund balance for twenty seventeen.
I'm with you now.
And then the ending, the ending fund balance projected for end of twenty seventeen is one million, eight eighty-five.
Right.
So, uh, and then, so and each, each fund budget summary sheet will be exactly like that. General Fund, Road and Bridge Fund, Emergency Service Fund, every fund will have summary things like that.
So Jay, we could probably do a spreadsheet showing what each-
That's what, that's where I'd like, that's where I'd like to go. That's something I would really like to see, I think would help me with this process, but you said you could get that done, so that'll be fine. At some point, and, and I'm, I'm fine with it. I understand what we're doing. It's just a simple arithmetic.
Yeah.
But I didn't understand how you found it. Now I understand. That's all I really needed.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, um, let me just clarify something in our process next week that might be helpful, Jay and Bob. Um, because we're going to have both of you sitting through this. So when we are analyzing with everybody sitting across the table, defending their budgets, we can very easily come to this and reference where they are. And if what they're presenting is over, then you're going to go back here and look and see what you have to work with.
Exactly.
So that's pretty much what, what we've got.
I'd like to go back and revisit this just briefly. We were up in number these areas, which is, is good. But in terms of how much we want to pull out to put into this next year's budget, I would caution that we leave a sum there for the following year as a surplus, because we, we, if this thing doesn't change, we're going to have to dip into it again next year. And I would like to see us have some flexibility in there until we see that we're coming back out and being paid. I don't want to hold a bunch of taxpayers' money that we don't need. But at the same time, I want to have some reserves, so if we, uh, if we have another downfall next year, that there's some reserves there that we can tap on and still have a little bit of a cushion.
If I'm not mistaken, there is a state law stating how much reserves we need, and I absolutely agree with you, Bob. Just because it's available doesn't mean we spend it. And, and I absolutely agree, because heaven knows what tragedy may occur, and we need big funds big quickly. I concur.
Well, yeah, and I'm questioning you from the standpoint, we need to be conservative when we look at this. It is the ball there.
Well, I think after you go through the budget process with all the departments, you'll be able to reduce the expenditures, uh, quite a bit probably. And then, depending on what you actually want done with the roads next year, if you, if you haven't, uh, balanced that particular fund, then you can take a look and see. Well, you know, I'd, I'd like to have them do this.
What do we have in our capital reserve now? I mean, uh, capital improvements?
Capital improvements, um, we've got about five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand dollars.
And you're on which page?
The first page.
Yeah, I'm on page one. It says fund balance beginning, five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand. And after the requests and the revenues-
And this is where we, we project we're going to be at the start of the year.
Right.
Based on spending to date.
Based on what I've projected to happen in twenty seventeen.
So if we needed to pull out some money out of that capital improvement for equipment, we have some excess center that we could-
You know, there, there, there's some expenditures requested for twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
And by the end of twenty eighteen, I projected, based on what I've been requested, to, to drop that by fifty-four thousand already. So you're going to have, by the end, the end of twenty eighteen, if you, if you've approved everything that's been requested, you'd-
Be it the one million fifty-one.
Or the one other time, I can't remember, I'm sorry.
You'd have four-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars left.
Yeah, what did you say?
No, I'm just saying, that's why this figure that was presented is if everybody got their wish list, that's what we would have to-
We have to pull a million out of it, yes, I'm fully aware of that. I'm doing twice. Fully aware of that, but at the same time, we look at our capital improvements, some of that will have to be for building and so forth. But it, but we also have a critical need in a couple of areas we're going to have to, have to address too.
Well, like I say, after you take a look at these for a few days, if you have some questions, give me a call.
John, again, both of you, unbelievable test. I love it when you're handing me-
It's a pretty big job, uh, every year, but next year, she'll be able to handle it, I'm sure, because-
No doubt in my mind. You've done so well for so long. I can look at this instantly and see exactly where we are, what the wish list is, and what, that's our job to figure out what you get, what you don't get.
Yeah.
And I got a summary here in the back of the book. I appreciate that.
Well, the big, the big thing this year that's different though is the fact that we've got these. We didn't have this documentation before.
Right.
And this is a godsend.
That is a godsend.
To go through it. What we have is everybody's wish list for five years.
Yeah, I got printed out in a book.
So forth, so that's, that's a whole lot more than we, before we'd sit at the table and talked about it, but we have time now for all of us to go through and look at that.
I've been through what you've given me, and it was a lot. And I've been through it, and, you know, the problem with this, and why I need the department folks here, is because I can see what they're asking for. I need to know, do you really need it? Is somebody could put off? You know, how are we going to find them? Those kind of things. That's the question that I don't have, but, you know?
And then one good news, um, with the, the insurance reduction,
Good job.
I've went through each department, and it's about a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand that it drops right off the top.
That we're saving.
Yes, so.
Yes, it's projected, we projected that amount early, and when she actually found out how much it was going to cost, then we'll adjust that amount as we go through each.
And then right there is another.
Yeah.
There's a hundred thousand off this, off this one million deficit.
Yeah, so that was-
Is there anything outstanding that we're still waiting for? Figures for calculation?
Actually, I have a que, on Cindy's. Did she, you know, she, because she was in Florida, so she absolutely could not be doing all these things. That COCO grant. It, will that be in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen? And that's the one question that- Because it will be, you know, it'll pass, but just so the numbers end up in the right one.
Well, if it determine, if you determine that it's going to happen in twenty eighteen, it's not in here now. But it'll be a pass-through, so it'll be in the revenue side and the expenditure side. Unless there's a, a matching part. So if there's a matching part to that grant, then that will have to come from somewhere.
That's the only thing that I know is not here yet.
How can I answer her?
It could be just-
Because she asked me, and you, immediately you jumped in.
Go ahead and answer your question, but you don't need to be rude to me, ever.
You keep cutting me off, I'm getting hurt.
Castized by you.
On that pass-through grant, we felt it was better that we comes in in eighteen, because we're not going to have anything done before eighteen anyway. And by putting it in now, that, we don't get the money until we get reimbursed for it. Right?
Correct, yeah, because it's, I, I think it's one that she spends and that does-
So John, by the time they were to do something in December, submit the bills, by the time we got it reimbursed from, from COCO, or whatever it is, the, we, uh, public health grants, what it is, we wouldn't have that money until eighteen anyway. So if it's okay with you, our thoughts were to leave it in. Uh, when it comes in this next year, we'll put it in.
Okay.
If that makes sense to you.
That'll be fine.
I think if, by putting it in seventeen, we're just clouding the waters.
If it materializes in twenty eighteen, towards the end of the year, all you need to do is, if you expend some money, you just need to have a supplemental budget.
It'll come in, I think, I anticipate we'll have this thing done by the middle of June, before we get into the flood seasons.
Okay.
Anything else on the budget? I'm excited.
Overstatement.
No, 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 I, I spent, I spent a long time going through these, looking at what they'd requested and where we are, knowing what the needs are in the areas that I work with. Not the areas, I don't know what Jay's areas are, and I haven't looked at Dawn, I mean, those are, they each have a set of that responsibility in their own areas. But by going through the ones that I'm responsible with, I feel very comfortable, we can work out some things. Uh, I talked to Road and Bridge already, we spent some time last evening, and we may have cut those down, maybe a hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Oh, good to hear.
So, from my standpoint, I feel very comfortable. That's why I'm excited, I feel comfortable.
I was just teasing you.
Well, it's a process, and until you've been through it, you don't understand it. And, and the one area that John cleared up that I haven't been able to comprehend was, you showed me that one and a half million savings. I saw you add those all up, but I couldn't find any place in here that reflected that total. But if we were to take the beginning balance three, four years ago, and take the beginning balance this year, we would see that amount of change.
That's what you'd see, yeah.
Yeah, so that way we can get a total, if we put it in a spreadsheet and you want to see it, that would be a way to, to see what that total is in each department. Okay, anything else?
It's a lot of work, so thank you.
Well, yeah, I, I kind of like.
Folks, if you can imagine, this is what we have to work through and work through next week in our budget hearings. So it is a somewhat involved process. But by, the new method we're using, by asking them what they need and what their justifications are, uh, it gives us a lot better feel. And we are allocating four days for budget hearings, and in the past, we've basically got it done in two. We don't want to short anybody, any department in time. We want to be sure that they feel they got a full explanation. Okay.
All right. Good day.
Thank you, John.
Yeah.
Thank you, John.
All right, next on the agenda, we had the RETAC board.
Good morning. I'd like to apologize for yesterday for interrupting your meeting. I'll stand over here.
I just want to know, did you get a paying one, or did you get a refusal?
We actually ran three back-to-back calls. Um, the first one dropped, we got a second one while on scene. Transported the second one, and then while en route at Hamilton Ranch, got toned out a third time, so. Already ran one at four-thirty this morning, so we've, now fingers crossed that this radio does not go off again. I made it through this section just for a minute. So, um, at the last board meeting that I did attend, I spoke a little bit about the RETAC board members. Three of you, county commissioners, are the ones that appoint the RETAC board members. Attendance has been lacking on Custer County's part. RETAC, um, is hoping that I can get that fixed. If not, then they're going to come to Custer County. Um, there is that possibility that we would lose our thirteen thousand dollar funds from RETAC that we get on a yearly basis. Um, so currently, um, the RETAC board members are myself, Chuck Abilioto, and Cindy Howard, and the alternative is Gail Stolfs, Stolfs, excuse me. We're allowed three primary board members and then three alternatives, in case those three primary board members can't make it. And they're also welcome to join the meetings even with the three primary board, uh, members. So I am asking to remain on myself. I think, um, I don't expire until twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen. I'm, I'm asking the board to remove Chuck Abilioto due to his upcoming, uh, retirement, and how they've changed the process of how we receive the funds in the county now. And that was his big part of the RETAC, was how, um, he submitted the receipts to you guys for reimbursement and stuff like that, so. And then also Cindy Howard, to have her removed. I did speak with her yesterday. She is completely on board with that. She said if she needs to, she could stay on as an alternative. But due to her OEM schedule and just being so busy with, with that, um, that part of her job, she's okay with it. So my suggestions is Molly Lantas, she is my assistant manager for EMS. And then, um, as a board member, and then Dave Taunseng, the fire chief for Wet Mountain Fire, as a board member. I'm suggesting Christopher Coches, he is an EMT basic of the Custer County EMS, as an alternative. Alyssa Magnuson.
Magnuson.
Thank you. Who's the public health as an alternate, and she also did speak at the last board meeting, that she is either a board member or alternate, she's okay for that. Um, and then I'd also like to suggest someone from search and rescue. At this time, I don't have a name. Um, I am on their agenda for their four-thirty board meeting, um, this afternoon. I think it's imperative if, um, for them to be involved with, when they're requesting funds, that they need to be involved in the board meetings and stuff like that. So I don't have a name for that, so as soon as I get that, I can put myself on another agenda for you guys and, um, request that alternative. So those are my suggestions at the time, the five, obviously the six they don't have at this moment, so.
Beth, can I ask you, when, when do you normally have meetings?
They used to be every month, and it used to be the third Thursday of the month. They've gone to, um, every two months now. Um, and then if they don't have enough for a quorum on the third Thursday, they move it to the fourth Thursday of the month. That is why some of my attendance has been lacking. That is the hospital board district also board meeting is the fourth Thursday of every month. And so usually I try and schedule myself so that I'm here, um, on shift for those board meetings. Um, I live in Plubble County, so I'm not trying to, um, come up for, um, a board meeting on that day. So that's why my attendance has been lacking, because they haven't been having enough for a quorum. So it's not only our county that's lacking, it's other counties in the RETAC board that is lacking, and so they're really pushing to get every county on board and get the primary board members and the alternatives changed.
I guess one thing I'd like us to consider is, since this is an appointed board, that we do have some kind of, uh, meeting report from RETAC.
Okay.
So we know what's happening, and if you're having issues with people not showing up, we don't wait until it's a crisis-
Correct.
-to address it.
Correct. And I'm more than happy to, um, once we have a meeting, um, like we met on, um, the twenty-eighth of September, I'm more than happy to get myself on your, at the soonest board meeting that you guys have, and talk about what was discussed at the board meetings. I'm fine. We ride in those ambulances and-
And you may want to check with Brenda, but we try to get written reports in advance of a meeting, so we can review it by the time you sit in.
Now, one thing we've also changed, is that we set a time for reports.
Okay.
And we have moved the, um, community issues discussions to the end of the meeting. So, uh, the last two meetings we've had, we've been able to stay on schedule, so if you're here, if you're scheduled at ten-thirty, we try real hard that you're on at ten-thirty, you're not going to have to sit here and wait until- you're not gonna have to sit here and wait until eleven thirty.
Okay.
I think that makes, we feel it makes easier timing, timing for...
The only thing that's hard for me is if I'm on shift and...
Oh, no, yeah, but I mean, but if you're...
That's why I had Brenda put me on yesterday and today, just in case, so. Um, the turnaround for like the board agenda and board meetings and stuff like that is typically about a week with RETAC, that I get that information that I can forward on to Brenda, so that you all have, so. But they do send out a report.
If you meet the third Tuesday of the month, uh, then we don't have this, so we can have that report sent the following...
Right.
You've got like ten days.
Right.
Or longer before the report. So we would have two, as you proposed, two from EMS on the, of the three members.
Correct.
And then the Fire Department. Do we want to take some action today?
Well, I'm just looking, cause we also received some information from Cindy with her suggestions, so, uh, whether we consider what she suggested too, which is not quite what Beth is suggesting.
And I didn't get that, so I don't know what she suggested.
We're looking, her suggestions are, um, Beth, uh, as a board member with an EMS alternate, alternate, and, um, Alyssa on board with an OEM, uh, as an alternate, and Fire with a SAR alternate. So, that's what we're looking at, what was proposed from Beth's point.
Well, I think agency-wise, we need to look at what agencies are most involved.
Correct.
EMS obviously is, is at the top of the list, but the other response agencies, uh, Dave Toncine from the Fire, I think is a, is a high-profile response. And then I look at, uh, this is the other side of emergency services, but I look at like, uh, Public Health in terms of endemic, of...
Correct.
Of that type of a thing, which can also be a, a real challenge, and may need some medical applications too, so, that was my thought. Jake, what are yours?
I, I think it's fine, I think the people you have on are, is everyone right? I'd like to go back to procedure, I don't think, I'm ready to vote today until I get letters of, um, interest from the people who we're looking to put on, because that's always been our procedure, so. And it could just be an email, you know, please consider me as a member. Um, and then I would be, I'm fine, I, and I would, I concur with Commissioner Hood that I'd really like to have a report from, never do I want you to have to take away from your important duties to write a report to appease us. That's what I don't want to do, but if you have a few minutes to jot down here is how many calls we went on, you know, just kind of give us an update on how we're doing, if you have any specific needs that you want from us, let us know. Um, yeah, so, uh, I'm happy with it.
I guess I'm a little uncomfortable with that, because you are your own entity. If you want to tell us what you called for, that's fine, but we're looking at is things that go through RETAC. As an AMS report, it's a RETAC report.
Okay.
Well, and I'm just gonna add...
I'm happy to share my number, so.
Well, you can't, but I'm saying, we gotta be careful here, because you are a separate entity, and we have no right to request you give us that information.
Some of the things that came up in question yesterday, Beth, were the fact that it's just that RETAC money isn't just for EMS, it's a pot that's shared.
Correct.
Between the other entities, and I guess that's why we were looking to have, uh, not just all EMS people on the board as board members.
Right, and that's why I suggested Dave Toncine, and then, um, we're talking with Cindy, she said that Search and Rescue is, uh, there's like three main people, and she was concerned that they don't, they're volunteer and they don't get paid, and it's an hour drive down there and an hour drive home, and, so that's why I suggested them as an alternative, that way if they could make it, even if the primaries were at the board meeting, if they were able to make it as an alternate, then that was a good idea. The RETAC funds are for emergency medical services, so any entity that provides that kind of service, um, a lot of the departments, like the Fire Departments, um, per se in Pueblo County, they're paramedics, intermediates, and basics, and those, so they respond with, um, AMR Pueblo to every single medical call. So that's a little different dynamic up here, cause our Fire Department is not medically trained, but they are emergency services. So, um, that's why I have suggested Dave Toncine, and then Search and Rescue, and then Public Health. And I was afraid with her busy schedule, making her a primary, that devotes her to those meetings, and with our lack of attendance, would it be better for her to be an alternate? That way if there was that one time that she couldn't make the meeting, then she's not being punished for not being there as a primary board member.
Well, we only meet six times a year.
Yeah, unless they start, and I'm wondering if they're gonna start maybe meeting more now, because of the way that they have changed the funding. So when we were getting the money and they didn't, they weren't dealing with the actual reimbursement of requests, we could meet every two months, but I'm kind of seeing, being there this last couple, last week, that, um, I'm thinking we might have to meet every month, because grants are being submitted and people are, we're gonna have to be reimbursed, and so I'm seeing more, that we might have to meet more than just every two months, so, but that hasn't been discussed either, so.
Well, I think Cindy works very nice as an alternate, as an alternate, because, first of all, OEM, which is any kind of medical emergency, emergencies, and secondly, she's still very closely allied with Search and Rescue.
Right.
So that gives us two, I mean, two different areas in one person.
Okay.
I think she makes a very strong hold, but I don't know, Chris, is he the deputy?
Um, Chris Coches is actually an EMT for me.
Is he the big guy?
He's a real tall guy, yes, real, um, yeah, real tall, real husky. Um, he also lives in Pueblo County, he was another reason why that was suggested, because he does live in Pueblo County, I know he doesn't work Thursdays, he just works mainly weekends, um, so that's why he was suggested.
My interactions with Chris have always been very close to him, I'm comfortable with him.
I guess I would like to go through the protocol and have everybody that is interested, whether they want to be a board member or an alternate, to send letters to Brenda.
Okay.
And then she can get those to us.
Okay.
And, uh...
When's the next, when's the next meeting?
Um, not until November.
Okay, so we've got, if we do this in the next couple of weeks, we've got plenty of time to get it lined up before your next meeting.
November sixteenth.
So we set, what do you want, middle of March?
Uh, well, today's date, I would say to get them in as soon as possible, so that we can act either the first or the second of November, cause we changed, we changed our meeting schedule around.
On the thirty first.
Or the thirty first.
Let's have them in by the, today is the eighth, let's have them in by the twentieth.
Today's, today's the, the fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give me a few more dates. Whether they want to be a board member or alternate, and I know when I talked to a few of them, they said they didn't care if they were a board member or an alternate.
We're very fortunate, they have you guys.
Thank you.
It's interesting, uh, how many calls you handle. I'm guessing you'd probably be over a hundred a month, do you?
Um, last month, or for, I haven't ran September's numbers, but for August, we ran, um, fifty-six calls for the total month, which last year we only ran thirty-two. Um, as of the end of August, we're up forty-one calls from last year. Um, so, last year we ran a total of five hundred and twenty-five calls. Day per year was the same number, and my first year here was three hundred and, it was almost one a day, it was three hundred and twenty-four calls for the year. Um, so we're, um, increasing in our numbers.
So you didn't, you didn't hear all your numbers, but you said you would, what did you think about call, two calls a day you're averaging?
Yeah, probably about two calls a day.
I know, there's times I hear you at three or four.
Yeah, yeah, so it just depends, I mean, we, we call it feast or famine up here, you can, you can be up here for a shift and not run a single call, and then you can be, like yesterday, run three back-to-back calls, so, you know, we just, we never know what's gonna happen up here, so. So we do have two full-time employees, um, on twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so.
And did you pass along my appreciation to the, maybe...
I did.
...we get a landing?
I did, mhm, yes.
Um, I'm making an assumption, and if I'm wrong, just say, no, not true, but I'm assuming there are a handful, a couple of people who are what I would refer to as frequent flyers, who really overtax your service for non-viable reasons. And if that's true, have you ever considered a fee or something to discourage that? Now, I don't want to ever not go to an emergency, but...
Correct.
I don't want someone to come down and go, "My daughter's sneezing, we need a trip to the, to the clinic," I mean, that's not what you're for.
Correct. And unfortunately, the, um, the Custer County Clinic is not set up to be a receiving facility, so we are not allowed to transport, it would be very nice for that, that typical call to, um, take to the clinic. Um, so, we do have, you know, several frequent flyers, as they're called. Our practice in the past has been that we haven't charged, um, so that we get called to something and the patient refu, let's say a rollover, and the patient refuses transport to the hospital, we don't typically cha, um, charge for those kind of calls. But what we're finding is, maybe we're putting a bandage on, or we're wrapping, you know, a laceration, or something that doesn't quite need emergency transport, but they can go by private vehicle. Um, so we are looking at maybe some V base, um, type thing on that. Um, and there's several factors in that, we're losing money, um, doing, giving out free supplies, we're paying two people to respond to these calls, um, and as we all know, minimum wage is going up, and that's a huge hit to us, and, and, and my budget. And, um, and so we are looking, you know, at how we can make it feasible, we don't want to, you know, break anybody, but, um, how to make it feasible for everybody, and, you know, what do we charge for and what don't we charge for, type thing.
Well, I think there's two other passes to that. One of it is by law, we have to respond to them, right?
Right, right, by law, you can't say no.
And if we did say no, well, then we're in a lawsuit situation.
Very much so, sir.
And number two, the fact that you're not charging for the, the, uh, the ones that turn down transportation, uh, not all of it, but a portion that is picked up because of the, um, mail levy in the county, which everybody's contributing in across the county for that pass-up.
We've recently, um, this year, um, we've been doing like standbys for free, for different area, you know, different organizations here in Custer County, and, um, so we have a, an event contract now, um, that's so we can get paid for these standbys, um, properly paid. Um, sometimes it was just a nice donation, and it was greatly appreciated, but, you know, I have to look at the whole picture of, I've gotta raise wages over the next three years and so, um, you know, that's, uh, that's, it's, it's rough, it's, it's hitting everybody, and I know, um, I recently, this year, wrote another grant for the state, um, we're getting Med Four remounted, um, onto a new chassis, new Ford chassis. I also, um, the grant included three brand-new Life Pack monitors, um, our monitors were from two thousand and two, and, uh, total cost was a hundred and ninety thousand, some change, and, um, the state's paying ninety percent of that, we're only paying ten percent of that, so we're paying about eighteen thousand dollars for those, um, two different, uh, things. Um, did get a two thousand dollar grant towards the striker chairs that you guys are wearing, um, so, some good things, we have four full-time, um, paid employees now, so we have benefit employees now, which we haven't had. Um, we've got sixteen people on the roster, so that's a huge thing, we've got a driver, um, program implemented for second calls, so they can help with the second call issue.
How many drivers do you have, Fire Department?
Um, I've got two, I've got two from the Fire Department, um, two for the posse, and then one dispatcher.
Sure, you actually got five additional drivers, if, if something happens, you're really short, I mean, we only got three machines anyway, but...
Right, right. So we've implemented a second, um, a second driver program to, um, they can, so they can help out with that second call issue, cause this is where...
Okay, now, we have, we have a situation where we did have a mass casualty, your, your procedure would be what, to bring all three buses out and...
Right, all three buses will be out, all employees will be called to respond.
Probably to cover it, and then we may have to have some of your other drivers to, to respond.
Correct. I would immediately call all employees, it'd be mandatory for them to respond, all three ambulances would be on scene, we'd assess the situation, see if we need like the life, memorial, SAR, reach air, uh, we would reach out to our, um, that's another thing that happened this year, I now have mutual aid agreements with all the surrounding entities, Deer Mountain, Ark River, Werfham County, Rye, Beulah, Florence, AMR Pueblo, and Fremont, um, so those are in place.
We need thirty ambulances, you already got the stuff in place to start going.
Ready to go. I worked hard this year.
Anybody in the audience have anything for EMS, what we have on here?
I'm sorry, I'm not feeling very well, so.
Well, I think we've done a wonderful job, I certainly am comfortable with this, and we will put this, get these applications in while we're here, and try to make a decision either the end of the month or the first place for you.
Thank you.
Be safe.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work, thank you.
Would you mind if we moved insurance down one up spot and we can get the Silver Cliff done?
Sure.
We're gonna move on now to the Zebulon Tri, Zebulon Pike Triangle.
Good morning, everyone. Good to be on this side of the table once in a while.
Nice to see you, sir.
How are you doing? I'm usually out here on the other side, where you are, taking all the heat.
Well, we don't have to wear a coat in the winter, I assure you.
I can tell you that's a fact. So here's a little more information to go along with, uh, the intergovernmental agreement, some kind of, some drawings of the situation. And we did this intergovernmental agreement, no, we did, they did in Silver Cliff in two thousand and seven, we have no signed copies, did you find a signed copy?
I don't know that we were looking for one.
Okay, we were hoping that somebody could find one, but if we can't find one, we got another idea, since this, have you read through the agreement already prior to today, and about, you know, where we maintain it and we keep it all up and fixed up and everything? And you'll look in there, that triangle along County Road two fifty-five, I did a little drawing here of, of the exact size of it, it's eighty-seven feet by a hundred feet with a diagonal of a hundred and thirty-two feet, six inches. So it's a little chunk of garbage property, right along the side of, uh, two fifty-five, Cliff Street to the north, and French Street to the west.
I've actually been there.
And so, what, what really brings this all about right now is, CDOT, three years ago, had a program to do kiosks, Wetmore's been doing them, Silver Cliff's been doing them, cause we cashed in to do this.
We still haven't got the Wetmore kiosk.
Oh, you haven't? Okay, we're at the point right now, our final print is here, but our final obligation to CDOT and the program is ownership of the piece of property. We was wondering if you would donate, sign over, hand over that chunk of property instead of a intergovernmental agreement. You have nothing contiguous to it. Steve, wanna whip something on him? I brought my cohort here, he's got all the information.
Can I just have his mentions again?
Oh, yeah, I could even, uh, go make some copies. Want me to go make a copy of that real quick?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, it's a really small property that, those two lots are mostly taken up by the Oak Creek Grade easement, so this little triangle is all that's left.
Oak Creek Grade is sixty foot there.
Yeah. And we've already got several displays there, you know, it's really nice, I'm trying to get CDOT to put a little sign on the highway that says Point of... I'm trying to get CDOT to put a little sign on the highway that says point of interest, so that people know it's there and they can go look at it. And then this is an additional kiosk that we'd be putting there for Silver Cliff through the CDOT program. But they need to see that we have control of the property before they'll allow us to put a tent--
Is that a touch spot?
Thank you.
Where there's historical markers?
Yeah, the Zebulon Pike.
That's it? Yep.
We put in a few trees, weed it all the time, mow it.
Yeah, it does require some maintenance, and the town has been maintaining--
Have you ever been to the sign?
I can't say that I have been.
That's because there's no sign on the highway that even tells you.
Yeah, we're really pushing for a sign. You should go there, it's a really interesting spot, there's good stuff.
You're actually right next to the Geyser Mine, so you're actually looking, as you look away from it, you're either looking to the west of the Sangre's or you're looking to the north of the Geyser Mine.
Yeah, and it's far enough off the highway, it's not, doesn't have highway frontage for visitor's center or anything, it's just a block off.
If you don't know it's there, you'd never go there.
If the county entered into a long-term lease to you, say, 99 years or something like that, would that solve the issue?
That still solves the issue, yep.
Yeah, would that, CDOT would accept that?
They would accept that.
They do.
We just have nothing right now in writing.
We got you. I'm on your side.
Yeah, everybody thought this agreement had been signed off in 2007, you know?
But we can't find the document?
Nobody can find the document. And it was before our time, so--
Did we have anybody try to research this document?
I'm not aware of this. No, this is the first time I'm seeing this document, to my knowledge.
Brenda, did you do anything on that?
No, I, I didn't see anyone said anything about--
And that's far enough off.
And that was--
That was 10 years ago, anyway.
2007.
So I don't have--
Yeah, intergovernmental agreement, yes, ma'am.
I don't have any qualms, guys, about the long-term lease. Because as we look at this, and I'd like to have our attorney look at it, but it says we can cancel this on 60-day notice on any sign. That gives a flexibility to both sides. I think it's important that we develop that more.
Yeah, well, we're trying to do things like that. It's all part of, you know, things for tourists to do, and locals as well. You know, I work in the museum as a volunteer, and I find the locals that come in don't know what they should know about the history of valley and what's here.
And the kiosk in Wetmore's supposed to be centered around Carhart. He was-- And the Forest Service was built the first campground in the Forest Service. The public use above Beulah was financed by CFNI for a place for their workers to go up and up on Second, towards Second Mesa. And that was about 1905 or 1904, something like that.
Perfect.
And we have the pipes up, we're working on.
Right.
I think that's important across our valley.
And it came out really nice. When you get a chance to see it, you'll really like it.
Well, we also--
Very well done.
However, we'll be designating around across the county as pipes around as close as we can come to fall.
Correct, yep.
So you can drive from one marker to the next.
I guess I would like, if we could get some time to see if we could find it. You found it. Look at that.
Quality. This is a sign in 2008, but that's signed.
All right.
So maybe we're just not even having to do anything here. So what is this here? Does this give a period of time on here?
Thank you.
Would you have roller skates?
How'd you find that so fast?
You don't have to give me your, just say because you're good. Don't give me your secret.
Well, I guess this has a no date ending on it. I mean, wouldn't this be just as good as 99 years?
Well, the way I read it is it goes on in perpetuity unless someone cancels it since it didn't notice, so it goes off forever, the way I read it.
This is pretty quality.
You'd seen this one before?
Can we have a copy of that?
No, I didn't see this sign.
Well, he's reading the sign one.
Yeah, 2008.
Is it different from this?
Uh, looks like exactly the same thing, just a different date on it.
Yeah, different date of agreed to sign, same 60-day. So it's exactly the same, except it's all signed.
And that was signed by--
Alan.
Alan.
Jay? Who was?
Debbie was the clerk.
I think you're all done. What do you think?
I wonder who signed this.
I think we're happy.
Thank you to our wonderful clerk.
She's on top of the program.
I'm on top of it.
Yeah, and CDOT has seen this and agreed that it would suffice.
Oh, Dick?
Guys, thanks for coming.
I'm pretty sure that's--
You bet, we like them.
Let's make some--
Let's get some copies of this.
Great, yeah. That would be perfect with us. Thank you for all the help. Thank you, Kelly.
Yes.
Sorry, I had to wait so long.
Well, we were interested in finding out how the big government works.
You're gonna-- Your enemy is happy, and sometimes the friends you pick, you wonder. Do you want me around this afternoon?
Uh, no, we have to go to a CML conference in Canyon City.
Okay, I need you.
But I'll be in all day Thursday.
Thanks, Donna.
Wouldn't you some of that door?
Oh, yep.
That's all I wanted to mention, too. So would you do and give me a hall?
Okay, I'll do that, actually, on this weekend. I was coming to visit you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Well, that was nice, folks.
Yeah. Feeling comfortable?
All right, now we're gonna go to the county health insurance. Is all I shall left on my agenda. Is there anything else?
Uh, well, if you wanted to talk about--
Just a moment, I'll be right back.
This is what Brenda actually emailed us yesterday to us. She found it. And it starts down where the yellow high line is, right there. Talks about the-- I just got a response from Marty Galvin, too. I'll read when everybody's back.
Did you read this? I did not.
See, I'll need my mother's signature.
So I'm gonna say we could probably talk to Judy Lones, since she's COG, and get a recommendation from her. We're not talking about a lot of money left in that account.
And that might be something we want to do with our affordable housing or something.
Right.
Another name I got was Autumn Deaver. She evidently--
She's a housing person in COG.
For dogs, so.
So Jay, do you wanna, since COG is your jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Talk to Judy?
Absolutely.
This was emailed to us.
What is it? What are we doing? What is this about?
Okay, yesterday, remember I questioned the treasurer about?
Yes.
That's what this is.
That's the account we're talking--
That's the account we're talking about.
I will talk to her, and I will, I'll get the information, and I'll report back.
All right, I'm just gonna take that back, 'cause we all got an email from Brenda.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't realize those two were related.
I would also be, if you can, I think the place to go with this may be to clean the account is with our housing group, with the Housing Committee.
Affordable housing.
What do you think?
Yeah, I mean, I've gotta find out what I need to get up to date on.
Okay, so this item we're talking about was an item that was on the agenda yesterday. You recall, we had an account yesterday of a little bit of money. We couldn't figure out how we were, what we could do with it, like about $1,700 that had been on the books forever. And we did find the original agreement, now that was signed in 2008 with the Council of Governments for rehab loans or grants. And that's why it has to be spent for that money, so we just can't transfer it to another, just can't whack it out and put it in the general fund. But February of '88.
'88.
And this is May of '88. So it's been on the books since '88. So that's 12, 29 years. So Jay's going to look into it, this is with COG, and so we can do to clean that item off of the, off the books. The next item we have will be the county health insurance.
And all I need is for you guys to sign the application. Bob to sign the application. And if you have that resolution, do that, too. Or do you have that, Kelly?
I've got it, I just need to sign it.
Okay. So as soon as--
So just Bob and I? Okay.
We don't have the effective dates and stuff in there.
Um, well, it's--
It's January 1.
January 1.
But I mean, what we have here is still blank.
Look over your last page. No, it says 1/1/18.
Oh, I thought that was, okay, I'm sorry. I was taking it as a slash.
Yeah, there's two places.
I see there's another.
One's the designation of the contacts, points of contact for the billing.
Brenda, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there's-- Did Donna fill this out, or did you?
I started to fill it out. I had questions. I went and talked to Donna. Donna and I worked through my questions. And then I also spoke to Meredith Bercham, who is the CTSI rep, who gave us the quote, and got clarification on something from her as well, so.
And Donna was okay with paying the bills ahead, each month ahead of time?
That's what we do.
I see it was highlighted in yellow, that's why I'm asking.
That's what we do right now.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, yeah, it'll stick. She was asking whether it would be the same, and so I highlighted that, too, more to let her know that it would be the same.
More reading.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got an email that just come in that I would like to ask Donna to read, please.
Uh, this is from Marty Galvin. So he says, Donna, sorry for the delay in getting back with you. I was able to speak with the attorney working with me on the program. October 13th deadline is only important if you want to revert the current application and submit a new application for the project. I believe you should submit a revised application with a request for the extension. Therefore, the commission can review the modification, given the prior application. Please let me know if you have any questions. We don't have any specific deadlines for modification applications, so please let me know when the county will be able to submit the application. Thanks. So I also sent, I copied Wells on this. He's on vacation, I believe he gets back to work tomorrow. So he's on this, along with Lisa. So I will follow up, because we're waiting for him to revise that application. So obviously, we're okay, and we don't have to hit an October 13th deadline.
That was really--
Okay, so just now, I'll be working on that.
Thank you.
Did you hear anything else?
Good.
Donna?
Anything else?
Folks, I'm going to declare the Board of Custer County Commissioners adjourned at 11:15. And I want to thank all of your-- Oh, I'm sorry. No, no public comment. Scratch that last adjournment. We do have public comment, I'm sorry. I'm not used to it down there. Public comment?
So why the move for the public comments to the end? I assume from what you said earlier that it's so that you can better schedule staff and what's, whatnot. And I totally understand that. It does, it really does make it very difficult for your citizens to be able to know when to come, though. So I just--
Did you follow our agenda? We see what time we're going to have these things, and if they're here at minutes--
Sorry, the one that's published doesn't have times on it. The times are just for our internal staff.
Okay, well, we need to perhaps-- I agree with where you're coming from. At the same time, I, it's costing a lot of people waiting out here an hour for us to come to, to come to the meeting, because the public comment period is going on. The other alternative, I would guess, is we're going to have a public comment period. We will have a set amount of time. And then if it goes on beyond that, we set it off and reconvene. But I like it at the end, because it gives us a chance to get our business done first. It still allows for input. But I'll sure let either one of my colleagues who wish to respond, respond to it.
I think that's exactly why we decided to place it at the end, just in consideration of our staff and other people who are scheduled. That's really the only reason. We were looking to do executive session if we needed to at the end, too, but sometimes that has to have, be scheduled in the beginning.
Jake? Jake, how's that?
Yeah, the timing got to the point where we had staff to do the reports were sitting around for a very long time, because there were multiple. We felt that was inefficient. But I understand what you're saying. I mean, look what happened. There were many people here, and they're not here now at 11:20-ish, that may wanted to have made a comment. If someone has a better idea, I'm happy to discuss it. I mean, I get your point, and I think it's valid. I mean, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure people have a right to speak.
Let them come to the meeting and listen to what else is going on in the meeting, and they're-- No, we very seldom ever get to this before. You know, I can't believe we've got two meetings that we've had done before.
Three.
So we know, we, if we say basically that it would be after 11:00 or something, perhaps that would work.
Is it an issue posting the times in public notice?
Um, I think the only reason why they weren't previously because, you know, you don't want someone going, you know, showing up at 10:15 and saying, "You said you were doing human services at 10:15, and you did it at 10 o'clock, and I wasn't here." And I think that's why we, in the past, have never published times, so.
Having just used this for two meetings, I think we got our reports through in a timely manner, and where people know they only have so much time, I think it lets it go quicker.
So you wanna publish the times?
No.
I would have no problem, we said approximately. But that's the reason Lynn didn't want to publish the time, because if we need to switch, human services and airport.
Right.
We can't, because we said they would be at such and such a time.
Yeah. So it's, yeah, publishing a time eliminates your flexibility with people's schedules. You know, if they can't be here until later, or whatever, so, I don't know. That's--
No problem. No grave.
Well, we can for sure see how this goes. See how it works. If it doesn't work, change it, put a specific time period on it.
We've had time where public comment is going on, an hour. And that, well, just the two road guys that are here. I don't know what their hourly wages, but just probably, if they wait an hour in the hallway, it's probably costing us $75 or more for their time just to wait before they ever get to the report. in the courthouse. We're spending some county time that they're, you could be out there doing something productive for the county rather than waiting in the hallway.
Well, we've also waited in the hallway for a long time for executive sessions, too, and you're paying them for that, too, so. And I'm not arguing in any way, I just said that, you know, the public perception is...
Well, it's interesting, that's the public perception. I see on Facebook with the people I've talked to having any problem.
Well, I haven't even been on Facebook to see what the, I mean, I threw it out there, but, you know, it just, you know, I've always admired that the county put the citizens first, whereas the towns put them last, although their meetings aren't quite as long, so that's a little easier. And I always felt like that was a real nod to accommodate the people you work for.
Well, if I'm the other...
I, I'm not arguing, I'm just, I've always felt like that was really cool.
Let me, let me give you an example the other way. If I'm a rancher and I'm doing chores, most days I won't be done by 9 o'clock to come in and do the public comment, because I'm still doing chores. I'm talking through the winter times. If, if, 9 o'clock is a tough time for rural people, if you're, if you're engaged in agriculture, to shut it down and get there.
I just wanted...
Well, we'll take it under, let's see what happens.
Your input?
Let's see what happens. Okay, anything else?
That's why the executive session was moved to the end.
To the end also.
And I totally get that, and I, and I appreciate that on behalf of everybody that has listened through those.
Right.
But it was kind of the same train of thought, really.
Okay, anything else? I see no reason for an executive session, do either of you? Okay, I think I now, I'm through the agenda, thank you for reminding me, and Jackie, thank you for reminding me, because I've got so many scratches on my, on my agenda, I didn't see that one down there. We will now be adjourned at 11:20. Thanks, folks.